All right, I'd like to call our city council meeting to order for Monday, April twenty first. I ask that we please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please prepare yourself as you see fit for our word. Most graces in heaven, Father, Lord, we come to you this day to say thank you, oh Father God. We thank you for the blessings that you give us, oh Lord. Lord, we know that at this day, there is a heart in the Catholic churches in the lost of Pope Francis, oh Father God. We ask that you lift up each and every one that is in that church for their, for the opportunity for the families to know that this Pope was out there in support of so many and wishing that there be peace throughout the world, oh Father God. Lord, we ask that you continue just to bless each and every one that is here today also. As we start this city council meeting, we know we are going to be losing some and we're going to be gaining others in the next council. We ask that you bless those families that will no longer be with us, oh Father. And we bless the aldermen that have served this community. And we ask that you continue to watch over them, oh Lord. Lord, we ask that as we start this meeting, we do things decent and in order. This is my prayer in your darling son, Jesus' name and for his sake, amen. All right, we have a roll call.
Alderman Jackson?
Present.
Alderman Coleman? Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Present.
Alderman Murphy?
Present.
Alderman January?
Present.
All right, we have a presentation of oath of office for promotion to Zimzamora into the rank of sergeant. So I'd like to start that presentation.
Amen.
I ask Officer Zamora, would you please come to the front?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a presentation to.
Mayor.
We have a presentation today to Officer Zamora to the rank of sergeant. So congratulations on that respect. So if I can get you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. And after I, please state your name, okay? I.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinance, rules and regulations of the city of North Chicago. Rules?
Rules and regulations of the city of North Chicago.
I will faithfully discharge the duties
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police sergeant to the best of my ability. I will further swear to uphold the mission of the city of North Chicago's Police Department and work faithful and work to faithful and, oh, excuse me, and work, I don't even know it. And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability. Congratulations. You know, I have known Officers Zamora for some times. And I will say that, you know, as I seen him work through the city of North Chicago, you know, it's, as I always say, it's not easy to work in this position. I states this time and time again. Our officers, they do the greatest job, I feel, in our community. You know, they are public servants that, and public safety. They have a job that we all have jobs. But their jobs could be on the line every time they get a call. And, and we know that. But, you know, the way they handle their job to make sure that they de-escalate any situation that comes on in North Chicago, because that's part of what they do as officers. And I will say that on this side of the Mississippi and probably the other side of the Mississippi, we've got one of the best police departments in the country, right here in the city of North Chicago. So congratulations, Sergeant, go forward. And I think there's some pinning. There needs to be some pinning on some badges and, and, so can your wife and family come up? All yours. Good job. Oh, yes. All right.
Watch your fingers.
Get it? Good job. All right. Congratulations. If you want to say anything.
Yes and no? I think I talk loud enough. Can everyone hear me?
No.
No?
All right.
I'm a politician.
Okay.
I'll keep that joke to myself. Just quickly, as I look around the room, I see a lot of faces that are largely responsible for me being in this position that I'm currently in. I see friends, I see family, community members, you've all supported me, you've all, you've all pushed me to be better than I knew I could be. My wife specifically, every day that I feel like, you know, I can't really do today, she's like, yes, you can, you know. So thank you all. I look forward to accept responsibilities to continue to proudly serve the community and God bless you all.
I think I've said everything I needed to say to Tim before. Congratulations, Tim, and welcome to the world supervision.
Right. Again, let's give him one more round of applause. Next, we have a resolution declaring the city of North Chicago a bird city. Could I have a motion in a second to move North Chicago to a bird city? If at all possible.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Murphy, second by Alderman Allen, that the city of North Chicago be declared a bird city. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Jackson? Alderman Coleman? Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
Motion carried. Ambray Darby, would you please recognize the passing of the resolution for Bird City?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Since nineteen oh five, the Audubon Society has been a champion protecting birds and their natural habitat. Being recognized as a bird city is a great honor for North Chicago. Only a handful of cities throughout the state of Illinois have received this honor of being a bird city. To be clear, it's not a bird designation, it's not a nature designation. This is an environment, an environmental commitment to the city of North Chicago that we will, through our infrastructure, codes and actions, protect animals that benefit our environment. We are proud to carry forth the charge started a hundred years ago by the Audubon Society to protect and appreciate our treasured wildlife. I'd like to introduce Carolyn Lewick and Glenn Moss with the Audubon Society.
Thank you. It's been one of my dreams that North Chicago, when we started, when Audubon actually started Bird Cities in the state of Illinois, that North Chicago would be along that line because they're along the lake. They were trying to work all the way down to the lake and, and where the birds are migrating. And you are right there, beautiful Fox Park. You have a beautiful library that actually looks out on where birds are located, right on that wetlands, and other features that make it just a perfect place to attract birds, which we wanted you to know also attracts birders who bring money and spend it in your town. So we will be working with you continuously now for the final parts of this. And you'll be getting a large plaque at the end, a couple of them, to designate you as a bird city officially. And like Ambray said, there aren't a lot of them yet in Illinois. So you are one of the first and it's, it's just a real pleasure to have you onboard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. Will you, did you have anything? He covered it all. Well, thank you, thank you from the Audubon Society for bringing this to the city of North Chicago. I want to thank our city council for passing it. And, you know, I kind of just look forward to seeing those individuals that would come out to observe the bird species that are here in our community. Like you said, I know along the lakefront, if you, you know, early in the morning, I mean, you could hear all the different birds that are out there. And, you know, it is, it is truly a pleasure and an honor to be recognized that for being a bird city. So thank you so much. Thank you. All right, omnibus vote agenda.
Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Allen.
I make a motion that we approve the omnibus vote agenda five dash one through five dash eight as presented, second.
Been moved by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the omnibus vote agenda be passed as presented. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Coleman?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
Since this omnibus vote agenda continues to be done in a non-German way, my vote is no.
All right, motion carried.
Alderman Jackson.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Jackson. Well, I got caught up. Who am I trying to get at?
Aye.
No. Motion carried. Public comment.
Anthony Brown?
How you guys doing this morning?
We're doing great.
I'm here on behalf of the mothers from the Kukla Towers and Bobby Thompson Manor. We do our, me and this organization, we do our annual Mother's Day breakfast. And we do like the two hundred building, three hundred building, Lila Gledge, Lake Shore Towers. And we do the Kukla Towers and Bobby Thompson Manor. And every year, the city of North Chicago helps sponsor the mothers in the Kukla Towers and Bobby Thompson Manor. So I'll be bringing in my letter of asking, I wanted to give you guys a heads up because of Mother's Day at the May the eleventh. And I'm hoping you guys should be able to help us with some sponsoring some mothers from the Kukla Towers and the Bobby Thompson Manor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles, January?
City Council, Charles January, resident of North Chicago. I came up today because I'm kind of sad. I have to move from Great Lakes, native place where I lived for eighteen years, me and my wife. And we've enjoyed serving in North Chicago and alderman re running for mayor and being an alderman and fighting with some of the aldermen up here. I'm going to miss those guys. We're going to stay, be in North Chicago, but not representing the seventh ward anymore. Looking around my town, this town, because I feel it's my town too. I'm seeing a lot of things that are still happening that I'm not happy about. Mainly support from our police department. We got some good officers, but we got a lot of rogue out here. And they're doing things like pulling guns on people, they shouldn't be doing that. And I know about it because they still call me, so I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned in North Chicago because we have, we're only two cities left, or can't get in North Chicago, that have aldermen like we have them. They don't, outside of those two towns, everybody runs at large. I think we need to change that. That would help, I think, I'm not sure. But I know our park district and our school board already does that. So I'm going to be trying to get a petition together, drive together to see what the citizens of North Chicago think. In North Chicago, we still have, unfortunately, mayor first, staff second, alderman third, citizens last. North Chicago should be citizens first, alderman second, mayor third, staff last. But that's not happening. I see a lot of spending, a lot of things happening in our town that just shouldn't be. But I'll keep talking about it, but maybe we'll get to it. Instead of fighting about it, I'm going to try to be more about solutions. But another thing, we have a person in this city council that, and this city that I would like to recognize because she works her butt off as a social worker in our city. That's, she was one, I won't, I just won't say her name, I'll just pass it that she is the best thing that happened to North Chicago in regards to trying to help our community. And she's going to get up and speak and I'll let her introduce herself. But I must say, citizens, please pay attention to what we're doing because some of these things just don't make sense. And it's, aldermen don't have enough time to read stuff and give it to their citizens. And I want to also commend, since I'm up here, I got an alderman, sometime I fight with him. I don't understand him all the time. But I must say, Alderman Carl Evans, we should applaud him because he works his butt off. I might not like some of the things he does and the way he does it. But him and Kenny Smith are our most, and Bobby Allen sometime, and Anthony Coleman sometime, my wife sometime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmesia Hawthorne?
Thank you. Good evening, we're Rockingham and the city council, our aldermen and our wonderful constituents. Greetings, I'm hoping everyone had a wonderful resurrection Sunday slash Easter. With my first saying, I would like to thank each and every one of you that came out and was a part of our Easter econ, the children as well, as the adults. We did definitely have a time. A special thank you to Alderman Allen that came out and the revealing of our part. Please stay tuned for the ribbon coming because it's definitely on the way. But it was definitely a big success. And we also had the pleasure of having Mr. and Mrs. Easter big bunnies there at our thing. So the children was definitely happy about that. A special thanks to the president of the board, that him and myself, we kind of played a little part in that. So moving on, so guys, Chicago-style stepping class is come get your groom on. It's actually starting March thirty first, it started already. So guys, please call the center to get information on that. We want you guys to come on out and get your step on. Next coming up for our ladies, the Fox Park Love and Friendship Conquerors Don't Accept, Defeat Women Support Group. You know, ladies, a woman's work is never done, so we want you guys to come out. May third, and that's going to take place at ten o'clock, running to one o'clock. It's going to have some breakfasts and whatnot, so please pass the word along. I do have flyers for you guys, so you can see, it's going to be a day of unwinding, ladies. Coming up next is our Fox Park District Eagles and Martial Arts System. Now, this is definitely a treat, it has been, it's actually started and it actually services the men, women, children classes, ages five to eight is one class, ages nine to twelve is another class, and ages thirteen and up, another class. And we also have adult sessions. The fee of that is forty dollars. And when I tell you they are getting their kick on over there, I've sat back and watched and I promise you, I would really be happy to learn some of those moves just to be out here in day-to-day life, right? Moving right along, we got the Fox Park District booted up. It's line dancing time. Now, if you're not a stepper, guess what? We got the line dancing for you. We're going to fit you in somewhere in there, but we want you guys to come out. It's every Thursday at Fox Park District, guys, come on. If you need some information, again, contact the district. Moving right along, Earth Day. Earth Day Community Garden Project, that's going to be hosted actually April twenty sixth. And we need volunteers for this project, guys. We're going to put some trees, flowers, all that good stuff. Make the city look beautiful, make our parks look beautiful as well. Moving right along, I know it sounds like the summer time is coming up, guys, we're not, we're going to be busy. We got the first annual inflatable fest. We're going to have big balloons everywhere, big old tall giant inflatables, guys. And I'm going to say this, not only would it service our children, but guess what? We're expecting you guys to get on too, because I plan on getting on some of them too. Oh yeah, it's going to be sturdy, so we definitely can do it. So I have two more left. We have the cheerleaders registration that's going on, guys. I need you guys to come on and participate in this. Girls, come on out and get your cheerlead on. And last but not least, this thing right here is definitely something that we want to take pride in. The Bears featured our girls' flag football team. So guess what, we got an actual program coming on, that's coming on, that's actually starting August eighth. So registration is now until July. So please contact the district and you guys are going to be calling eight four seven six eight nine seven four eight zero. And again, for those that did not hear it, it's eight four seven six eight nine seven four eight zero. And I am Commissioner Carmesia Hawthorne, Chair of Parks, Co-Chair of Finance, and you guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Hawthorne. We love the updates from the Fox Park District. Thank you so much.
Charlotte Burns?
I want to thank, I don't care if people hate me, I'm sorry, it's the job I do. I want to thank all of you for what you have done and will do for the city of North Chicago. Kathy and all of those that I've gotten to know personally, I appreciate the work that you've done while you're here. Hopefully those that fill in will pick up and move the city forward. I want to thank the mayor for being a neighbor and always being present and available when things happen. But I will say this, and I want to say this for the last time. I am tired of my family members being harassed by the police department. I've had to deal with them for the last three years. I think we talked about this before. I looked into litigation. I should feel safe here as I did when I was in Oregon and in DePage County or wherever I travel. There's no reason why officers should be coming to my house when I have nothing to do with whatever they're looking for on their own thing. If they're running renegade, we need to figure out whether they need training or not. It doesn't make me feel safe as a citizen, a abiding citizen, to have to look on my camera, get calls or anything about my daughter not feeling safe about coming home when there's a state case that has nothing to do with her. I shouldn't get a call at ten thirty at night because officers have detained my daughter illegally when she's picking up her dogs or dropping off a kid that she picked up from cheerleading. How is it that my family keeps getting targeted? So if it's happening that much to me, then I'm concerned that other citizens are going, doing the same thing that's happening to them. And I'm not going to tolerate it anymore. And those officers need training. They need training. They need training. If it's a state case, they have nothing to do with it, they're messing with witnesses. I'm a witness in a state case. Why are you tampering with me and tampering with evidence? I'm not going to tolerate it and tell, I'm telling you, I'm not going to tolerate it. My daughter doesn't feel safe. Does not feel safe enough to come home. She doesn't feel safe walking the dogs in the community. This is a community, I pay taxes there, we pay taxes here. I choose to live here because I grew up here. I'm not going to tolerate it. I'm not going to be appeased by people telling me we're going to deal with it and nothing happens. This is three years. Guns being pulled on me for sitting in front of my house. And I'm getting ready to go on a trip. And I'm getting ready to go on a trip because somebody feels paranoid. I'm not gonna tolerate it anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. All right. All right, uh, regular agenda. Seven dash one, consideration approval of resolution honoring First Baptist Church of North Chicago for a hundred and twentieth year anniversary.
Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approve a resolution honoring First Baptist Church of North Chicago for a hundred and twentieth anniversary as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Smith, that seven dash one be passed as presented, are there questions? Alderman January.
Resolution honoring First Baptist Church of North Chicago hundred twentieth, hundred twentieth anniversary. Whereas the First Baptist Church of North Chicago was founded in nineteen oh five. And whereas the First Baptist Church of North Chicago is the oldest African American church on the North Shore and has been a mainstay in our community since it was founded. And whereas the First Baptist Church of North Chicago has been blessed with exceptional visionary, visionaries who left a legacy for the future. And whereas on May, in May nineteen seventy-three, the First Baptist Church of North Chicago had a grand march from fourteen twelve Greenfield up Fourteenth Street, Audrey Nixon Boulevard in North Chicago with a ceremonial police escort. And on June ninth nineteen seventy-four, celebrated the cornerstone lane. And whereas the First Baptist Church of North Chicago has several ministries and is continually growing and gaining new members in the community. And whereas the legacy that the founders began one, a hundred twenty years ago continues with Pastor Lee Zachary Maxey carrying the torch for the Lord one year at a time. Keep moving forward, brethren, I count not myself to have apprehended. But this one thing I do for getting those things which are behind and reaching forth unto those things which are before. I press toward the mark of the prize of the high calling of God in J- in Christ Jesus. Philippians three thirteen fif- fourteen, four, thirteen through fourteen. Be therefore resolved by the mayor Leon Rockingham Junior and the City Council of North Chicago that the First Baptist Church of North Chicago shall be congratulated on this hundred twentieth year anniversary for its accomplishments and shall be honored with a copy of this resolution dated this twenty-first day of April two thousand twenty-five.
Okay. Uh, you've heard the, uh, resolution, and there's a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Motion carried. Uh, seven dash two, consideration of approval of reimbursements to Frank's Lounge in an amount not to exceed five thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-one cents.
Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approve a reimbursement of Frank's Lounge in an amount not to exceed five thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-one cent as presented.
Second. Second. It's been moved by Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Allen, that seven dash two be passed as presented, are there any questions? Hearing no questions, roll call.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
No.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, I think that should do it for you. Were you here for your?
Seven three, sir.
Okay, uh, consideration of approval, uh, seven dash three, consideration of approval, renewal of contract for, of AMN Enterprise Incorporated not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for twelve months.
Mayor, Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to renew a contract of AMN Enterprise Incorporated Services not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand for twelve months as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Murphy, that seven dash three be passed as presented, are there questions? Uh, Greg, did you wanna speak on that?
This is the renewal of the contract for, uh, for Bob Miller to provide services, uh, at the Water Department for the upcoming year. Contract expires the end of this month, current existing contract.
Alderman Murphy.
Um, I know that the contract was actually attached for the previous, for our previous meetings, um, materials. I don't have it in front of me tonight, unfortunately. My question is, um, is there a way to, either in the contract itself, if it's not there, or by discussion tonight, um, make a decision that this contract should be reviewed at the six month mark?
The, the year long contract can be reviewed at the six month mark if the, uh, if the council wants that, give staff that direction to do a formal review, to see what the status of services are and if they're, if they've been completed or need to be continued.
I, I'm speaking only for myself, but obviously, everybody else can weigh in. I think it's important at this point that we begin to look at a transition point. Not because I think that there's any deficiencies here, but this was meant to be an interim position. My understanding was that it was meant to be an interim position. I believe we're somewhere right around the three year mark. All due respect, I think it's time that we start looking at the way to transition out of this role and into a role that, um, is, is a better use of, of our city staff. And to put things in place so that this is no longer needed. I understand the necessity for it, and have up till now. I think it's time we start looking at a way to move forward so that that's not a necessity going forward.
If, if the council, uh, so directs, staff can put together benchmarks that need to be, uh, that should be evaluated over the next six months and then presented to council, uh, six months from, uh, the execution of this agreement.
Any other questions? Alderman Coleman.
Um, I believe in committee, we had discussed.
Aye.
In committee, we had just discussed six months originally. Is there, instead of doing a one year with benchmark, can we do a six months with an option?
Right. The, the council can make that decision, it was asked by the, uh, committee chair to be moved forward at a twelve month.
All right. Mayor. Uh, Alderman Allen, then, then Alderman Evans.
And I think we should stick with six months, and every two months, we should be looking and seeing, we should have some goals set where you are, and then every two months, don't wait till six months and say, hey, this what we get, no. I wanna see something implemented every two months to see, because you don't do that, guess what I do? I just sit back and get another six months out of it, just ride on the seat, I'll just tell you what.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to put something in place that goes six months and see where we are with that. That's just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus on six months.
Like, the, I, I know Alderman Evans was asking to be recognized, the, the council can approve the twelve months, have a stipulation that we would do a review, a full review at six months with benchmarks presented to the council every two months or three months, whatever the council decides.
Uh, which would be appropriate, but Alderman Evans?
If, if that is decided that, that way, don't just do it for this person, do it throughout the whole city. Don't just focus on Bob Miller or just Public Works, focus on the city. If you wanna bring in people, you do it for IT, you do it for economic, do it for everybody.
Well, well, he's the only interim though.
I know, but the reason that they, they gotta understand why he's the interim. Because he came in to fill the position that we had a director in. So once you get rid of Bob, you don't have that director again, so now you gotta still go out.
Well, well, actually.
Or not.
Cause Tommy is gonna be moving into that, so that's why he's the interim, working with Tommy to move him into the director's position.
Everybody understand, maybe we should let Tommy or Rob come up and mention what is going on.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Let's, let's don't, let's don't get into that at this point, but I mean.
I don't believe everybody's understanding because what I'm seeing here is that people are saying, well, we should go six months because he's the interim. But he's been here working with our, with our staff, and Rob just got promoted himself. So we gotta be careful on just saying, well, let's just change it right now, because it's time. Maybe it's, it'll be time within a six months or a year, here, but just to say, oh, well, we're gonna just keep it at six months and stuff.
Well, let me, I,
Yeah, that's a check, that is.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I hear, I hear what council is saying also. But, uh, I, I would like what Alderman Allen has said, uh, but I would ask that we had a, a twelve month with a two month review.
Every two?
Every two months to see where we're at and, and if possible, and if necessary, maybe at that six month mark. If, if changes needs to be made at that point, we can move forward with it.
I,
if that would be appropriate.
Mayor, from a sta- uh, from a, from the Chief of Staff's position and the staff position, to, to, uh, approve the contract for a year and exercise the out at any time. I mean, the council can do that, the council could turn around and say, after four months, the ben- benchmarks have been met, we're gonna give thirty day notice and conclude this contract based on what the benchmarks are. It could be eight months, it could be whatever we decide based on the benchmarks that are achieved. The direction I provided Bob Miller is that his focus in, in whole is to be on the Water Department, uh, to, uh, bring, uh, Rob along as the new Water Superintendent. Uh, Clarence, uh, Johnson, Tommy. Uh, and I've had the discussion about being, for lack of a better phrase, pushed out of the nest, and he's, uh, go ahead and run with your, what you know, that's why you're in the position, so the focus here is, is on water. Um, again, uh, the, the council has prerogative to exercise the out on that contract whenever they choose. I am, I am in support of benchmarks and, and achieving those benchmarks and reporting back to the council on are they being achieved, I think it's fair for everybody to understand, uh, what's being accomplished, I think that's fine.
Alderman January.
Thank you, Mayor.
Then Alderman Smith.
Thank you. Um, my question is, for this current contract, when is it ending?
Months, months end.
At the month, at the end of this month?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, thank you, that was my only question.
Alderman Smith? My question is, what benchmarks were put in place leading up to now, and have they been met or not?
I will tell you, I can't speak to three years ago because I wasn't here, I can tell you what I can speak to, and that's that I needed to see, um, uh, the Superintendent of Public Works who handles streets, and that's Tommy Johnson, um, acquire the skills necessary to turn around and be able to manage staff, develop staff, and, uh, meet the objectives of the infrastructure and forestry needs that need to be taken care of, he's met those. Um, I feel comfortable with, uh, the ones I've set in place. Uh, as far as Water Department, uh, Rob still needs some time, uh, there's no doubt about that. Uh, the Water Department is in a better position, uh, from a organization and development, staff development, uh, and mentoring standpoint that it may have been in the, prior to my, uh, uh, making that change in, in my arrival. But he still needs, uh, a little bit of more handholding. Uh, and that's not to be derogatory or saying things negative because Rob's a, uh, excellent, excellent manager.
And that's based on what?
A familiarity with the Water Department, familiarity, familiarity with the shift responsibilities, um, a lot of the technical aspects of the job, less to the personnel aspects of the job.
And then what's the difference? Employees.
Yes, sir.
What's gonna be the difference in learning everything that you just said he needs to know in six months or twelve months? Who would say that's gonna be accomplished then?
We don't, we don't know until we set those benchmarks, and then we evaluate it, and then we evaluate not only Bob as a mentor or AMM as a mentor and, and assigned to that position, as well as Rob's ability to turn around and grasp the information and be able to turn around and get the technical side of it.
And then, and then when the twelve months, when the six months, twelve months are up, then is, um, is he being moved into that position then?
He is in that position, right now he's being, uh,
Go Rob.
He is in that position right now. Can, can,
But you said he still needs some more training.
That's correct. Correct, more development, that's correct.
Just that, before I, just as, as Clarence did, as he was, as Bob worked with him in the Public Works or Street Department, now that Rob is in the water, we're moving Bob over to the water to help to mentor or train and other issues that may take effect at the water plant that he may need that expertise. We feel that Clarence has, has achieved that, we're using these next six months to try to see if would work with Rob, that's kinda where we've moved off to.
And it, and it, you, you, you also need to, as a manager, um, listen to what your staff is telling you, and, and to be quite honest, I can't speak to the, uh, previous management that was overseeing Public Works Water Department, but I can say that staff has communicated to me that they did not feel they were adequately equipped to do some of the functions that are required of a senior staff manager. Um, that's why this coaching was needed, I don't think there was anything about, uh, uh, Bob being put in place that was inappropriate. Um, I can't speak to benchmarks that were, were, were not established prior to my arrival, but we had enough established that I could go ahead and say, Tommy Johnson's ready to go, and now I need to turn around and make sure Rob Freeman is.
Then I say, Alderman January.
Um, I know the contract is at a close this month. However, with what this discussion is providing us tonight, I truly believe that the aldermen need to have this seen in writing as to the benchmarks and the expectations over the next six months, twelve months. We need it in writing to see what exactly is it gonna look like and making sure that it is going to be taking place. So with it having it in writing, you will see that. So my motion at this time is to, um, hold, uh, uh, seven dash three, the renewal of the contract of AMM Enterprise, uh, services not to exceed a hundred twenty thousand for twelve months to the next council meeting for, um, it to be, so you can see the information, and then do a very germane and proper voting, um, have that knowledge in front of you, so. Uh, that's my motion is to move and hold it till next council meeting.
Second.
It's been a motion by Alderman January, second by Alderman Jackson to, uh, table this or hold it to, uh, our next council meeting. Are there any questions on that?
Question.
Alderman Smith. If it passes, how's it gonna get paid for, because it's gonna end at the end of this month?
That's a good question.
We create other contracts out without a contract.
I would, I would venture to say if we have to, we'd have to call a special meeting. If it's that important and it's that critical, then you call for a special meeting and make sure that we have all the information as Alderman January recommended, uh, beforehand, and just call for a special meeting. We've done it before, and then we can do it again.
City Attorney, could I defer to you on that?
What's the question you want me to address?
Sure, the question, can his contract just continue to run until the council next meets?
I mean, the council next meets on May second.
May, May fifth.
May fifth.
So there's a five day gap.
Wait, why is it?
Mr. Mayor.
It's May fifth of Thursday? No.
May fifth.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Twenty twenty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have the wrong month up. Uh, I mean, that's the third workday of May.
It's the third.
So, I, I guess I would, I can't answer whether or not a three day gap is a problem or not? If you, if the council thinks that three day gap is a problem, then I would ask Alderman.
Well, actually, actually it ends up being a one day gap because the, uh, Thurs- uh, the Thursday, because we only, we limited to thirty, uh, twenty-five to thirty-five hours in the contract. He won't work that Friday, Saturday, Sunday off, Monday's the fifth. So it'd be that Friday, I'm sorry, that Thursday and then that Monday. Yeah, so I'll present, I'll present, uh, some benchmarks. The question, I guess the question I'll need to ask, and I'll get with the Chair of the, uh, Public Works Department on this is, uh, from an operational standpoint, we'll know what the, what they expect, I'll know what the expectation of them. The council may differ, but you know, it's, I guess, what I'm seeing is it's gonna be kinda tough when he's being evaluated by part of an operating team versus the legislative team, so. But I'll prepare, I'll, I'll prepare the benchmarks and let the council make their decision.
The alternative, I mean, the alternative is to have Alderman January amend her motion to table it to a sooner date, so there will be a special meeting. But either one of those is acceptable.
I think we're better served going to the fifth, that allows me. I think we're better served going to the fifth. That allows me time to get the benchmarks. It allows me time to sit down with Alderman, uh, Evans, as well as with, uh, with Rob.
Alderman Smith?
This is a suggestion. Can we just prorate?
We, we, we need to approve, if you, if you wanna approve something tonight, you could approve it for two days.
Right, and just, and just prorate it.
You wanna approve it for May first and May fifth?
Correct. And then on May fifth, you'll, you'll vote on it and go from there. Cause we'll have the information. All we can do is a special meeting. I'm saying as far as the pay goal, you could just prorate it for those few days.
I don't think it's, no. I, I think we'll just hold it till.
May, May fifth, that because, uh, both Rob, both Bob and Rob, I'm sorry, Bob, Rob and, and the city, uh, deserve to have some clear, uh, clear goals and make sure they're unambiguous and that the, and that the goals that, uh, are set are achievable. Um, and not just pie in the sky. But I need to, I need to spend the time with Alderman Evans and, uh, the, the two parties.
So right now there is a motion on the floor to, uh, table this, uh, until the next city council meeting. Correct? Alright. Roll call.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
Aye.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman? Oh, okay. Alderman Evans? Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Alright, seven dash few, seven dash four, consideration and approval of FY twenty twenty-six budget.
Mayor Rockham?
Alderman Allen?
Can I make a motion that we consider approving the, uh, FY twenty twenty-six budget?
Second.
Remove Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that seven dash four be passed as presented. Are there questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January? Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman? Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye. Motion carried. Seven dash five, consideration of approval of reappointment of Jeanette Allen to the North Chicago Library Board, for, for a three year term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Mayor Rockham?
Alderman Evans?
I would like to approve the reappointment of Jeanette Allen to North Chicago Library Board for a three year term, ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight as is.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Evans, second by Alderman January, that seven dash five be passed as presented. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman January? Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
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 Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven dash six, consideration of approval, reappointment of Edward Houston, to the North Chicago Library Board for a three year term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Jackson?
I, uh, make the motion to approve the, uh, reappointment of Edward Houston to the library board, for a three year term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
It's been moved by Alderman Jackson, second by Alderman January, that seven dash six be passed as presented. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
Motion carried. Seven dash seven, consideration of approval, appointment of Beverly Allen, to the North Chicago Library Board for a three year term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Mayor Rockham?
Alderman Evans?
Like to make a, approval for the reappointment of Beverly Allen to North Chicago Library Board for a three year term, in the April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
It's been moved by Alderman Evans, second by Alderman January, that seven dash seven be passed as presented. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January? Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, seven dash eight, consideration of approval of the city bills.
Mayor Rockham?
Alderman Allen?
Make a motion to approve the city bill. The city bill plus the special bill, bill run is seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars, and twenty-five cents when it comes available.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Murphy, that the city bills be passed as presented. Are there questions on the bill? Alderman January?
My mic is not working right now, so. There we go. Hello.
Hi, Alderman January.
Um, how are you?
Good, and yourself?
Good, good. Um, for the last time, my two usual questions.
Okay.
Um, and it's the last time for now.
Yes.
Never know what's gonna happen down in the future. Um, but, uh, are there sufficient funds in the account to cover this bill run and when will the checks be cut and sent?
Okay, there are sufficient funds in the bank account to cover the bill run. Um, the checks will be cut tomorrow and mailed out on Wednesday.
Okay. And then my second question, um, is, the, uh, water fund, what is the liquid amount at the end of business day?
Thursday, yes. Um, the, at the end of business day on Thursday, the liquid amount was three million, five hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred two dollars and thirty-six cents.
And do you by any chance have the non-liquid?
I don't, but I believe Alder- I think Vance is online.
I have it. I'm on.
Yeah. Hi Vance.
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on here, Alderman. Hello, Alderman. Uh, the liquid amount at market close today was one million, three hundred thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Evans? Alderman Allen? Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
No.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman?
Motion carried. Uh, miscellaneous business, anything under miscellaneous business? Alderman Allen? Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Coleman?
Um, on May the fifth, uh, I will be out in the second ward. That's my day for, uh, second ward cleanup. I know everybody has their day. Uh, my day is Monday, the fifth. Uh, we'll be focusing on areas throughout the, uh, city that, might need the attention of some of the department heads. And also on, um, the tenth of May, I'll also be having award meeting at city hall, uh, on the tenth of May as well. So those are the two events for the second ward, the fifth and the tenth.
Anyone else?
Mayor.
Alderman Smith?
I would just like to say it's been a, a honor and a pleasure, serving the city of North Chicago, the fifth ward, working with the Aldermen and the mayor. I've just been trying to bring the team together, the Aldermen together and all working together and I just wanna pass baton on to, Yes, to Tabitha. Um, you have a great ward, um, great businesses in the ward and, uh, I'll pass baton on to you, continue to, continue to do great things in the ward. Um, but again, it's been a great run, great four years. I've enjoyed it, the block parties, the ward meetings and just doing, the thing for our city, um, cleaning our city. I'm glad we see we're gonna do the clean sweep of our city, which is, was always important for me about keeping our, beautifying our city. Um, and just wanna encourage everybody working together, cause together, the acronym for team, together each accomplishes much. Um, it's been a great pleasure and an honor serving the city of North Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Alright. Hearing, uh, no one else, uh, go into executive session, uh, for five ILCS one twenty-two C eleven, uh, intermittent litigation and, uh, five ILCS one twenty-two C five purchase and lease of real estate. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Allen, that we go into executive session. Are, are there any questions? Uh, roll call.
Alderman Allen? Alderman Smith? Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman January?
Aye.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman? Alderman Evans?
Motion carried, uh, we will be out in a little bit to, uh, come back and to go into committee and that's where you'll be at, okay? Allen, Coleman? Roll call.
Aye. Present.
Oh.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman January? Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman? Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Jackson, second by Alderman Smith, the city council stand adjourned. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried. Alright. We have, let me know when you're ready. Alright, uh, committee of the whole, uh, do we have a motion to, uh, put a, oh, huh, roll call for city of, community, yeah, roll call for committee of the whole?
Alderman Jackson?
Present.
Alderman Coleman? Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Present.
Alderman Murphy?
Present.
Alderman January?
Alright. Uh, we have five items, actually we have three, cause, uh, item three, we're going to remove that for right now, and, uh, bring it back, uh, at the next city, uh, committee meeting. Uh, let me ask, is there anything under the department heads that, that, that council would like to open up or discuss? Okay, if I hear none, then, uh, uh, going to number two, discussion of requests for a class B li- uh, liquor license, uh, Arcade Business Incorporated DBA John's Liquor.
Mr. Mayor, remember the county, uh, mem- member of the committees, committee of the whole, uh, what we're requesting here is to authorize the city attorney to make an amendment to the liquor code, creating an additional class B license for Arcade Business Inc., doing business as John's Liquor Store, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was previously, a liquor store and, uh,
We just have a new.
New, a new owner, so you, uh, liquor licenses are not transferable by state law. So that's why we're requiring, so one B license is falling off, a new B license come on, just a different name on the ownership.
Does this, from, does this business have a gaming license too?
Could not tell you off the top of my head.
Yes.
But they don't put the machines yet.
So, so.
It's.
So, this, we've, we've addressed this before. There, there's a, conflict between a gaming license and a packaged liquor license. And the class B is the packaged liquor license. The gaming license requires you to have a license for sale on the premises, for consumption on the premises.
A GP license?
Right. The B license is only for the sale off the premises, which doesn't qualify for the gaming license. So, what we've done in other businesses is we've created, two different licensed premises within the same property and you have to create some sort of, visible barrier between the packaged licensed premises and the gaming licensed premises. We've done that in other businesses. But I wanted to make sure you were aware of that because this is the first time we're reading this and give you advance notice.
So, so actually then they need to have a class B and a GP license, for the packaged lic- liquor. I see you listening. And a GP license for, for gaming.
So Johns, they came in, um, and got approved for a GP license, however, they never applied.
Right.
Yeah, they've never applied. They never came for a lot of application. They never exercised their right.
But this, this company is looking to have gaming and, and they wanna, they want both.
There was no mention of that when I talked to her, because we had a gaming moratorium, so.
And the, and the mor- moratorium, the gaming moratorium still exists until we, until we, uh, until we put together the new language for the new, uh, for the amended ordinance on that, which, some of it discussed some of the things we're talking about tonight.
Right, but, but this, this company Johns had both. So I mean, we're not creating a new license, we're just, asking for the sale of, the, of the company for both, you know, the package and the gaming.
But, let, let, for clarity for, for the petitioner or the requestor, uh, uh, from what the city attorney said, they can, it, we can amend the code for the B license, take one off, put one on hypothetically. And they can be awarded it because they, if they meet everything. At the point that the gaming moratorium is lifted because the ordinance has been chi- uh, amended and changed, at that point, they can apply for their, get the GP at that point, correct?
They can, and at that point, we'll have to review their.
Right, exactly.
They, uh, well, then I got a question that, they can't, because I, I know with the gaming, we were not looking to add more gaming parlors out there. This is a trans- I know, not necessarily a transfer, but they're, in, when, when they were looking to purchase Johns, they knew that Johns had a package liquor and a gaming on there. And that's what they were looking to, transfer to them. So, I mean, I, I think that's a little bit different than us saying we're gonna create another gaming license.
You don't have machines right now, right? So they don't even have machines. They don't, they, they never, they never, they never pulled the license.
Well, they don't have a license for the, 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 they're the, they're the new owners.
But they're saying that the business doesn't even have machines right now.
The previous business pulled GP so they could get gaming, but never exercised the gaming.
So, so I, I understand that, but I mean, if, if I was them looking to purchase that s- store, that store had, had a packaged liquor and gaming. Now, it's up to them to go back and get to all the, what they need to, get the gaming into it, but that store already had gaming there.
But that's, but that license isn't transferable, just like.
Right, so, so that's what I'm saying. So if I'm asking to put on the next council meeting, a B license and a GP, so, cause that came with that store. That's what I'm saying. Correct? It came with the store. I mean, whether they, just, even if, if they had a, if they had a B license and they didn't wanna sell packaged liquor, they still had a B license, right? And, and they, they were still. So if they had, if they had a B license and the gaming parlor and they didn't use a packaged liquor, they still had a B license at that store.
If they paid for the license, they had a license.
Okay, but there is. Right. So, so, okay, but let this group, apply for the GP. And if, hopefully they're gonna move forward with it. And, 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 and start paying those gaming fees to do it.
So, Mayor, you're saying put on the council agenda the B and the GP?
Yes.
Advance it that way.
That came with that store.
At the same time, we'll, we'll be presenting the more, uh, ordinance on the amending language. Just so it's all clean across the board.
Right. I mean, they're, I, I don't think they're coming in asking for a new license. I mean, even, they're not creating nothing new. We're just, they're not, on them, once they purchase, if, if they get the, the approval of the B and the GP, it's up to them to go back to, come back to us and pay the fees that are associated with both license.
I, I think what the city attorney wants to make sure that's clear, and Adam, jump, jump on me if, if I'm wrong, he just wants to, understanding they purchased a business that was gonna be a liquor store, that had, uh, o- opportunity for gaming, had the o- owner they bought for exercise that opportunity. It was approved by the council. Council didn't say no. The council said, yep, that's okay. I think what, I, I think. I think what, I, I think what the city attorney wants to make clear for, generally for the public, and it's the right thing to make clear, is that that's the approach we can take going into the council meeting in two weeks. But just so the public knows that liquor license aren't transferable, this is not a transferable license as a course of, you can't sell your business with the licenses. So, that, I think that's what the city attorney's trying to make sure he puts out there.
That, 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 yes, that's it, and two is that if they end up exercising the GP license, there needs to be some review of.
Right, yep.
Oh, yeah.
Quick, Mister Mayor.
Alderman.
Um, is there gaming license across the street, uh, is there gaming at, one was Radajacks and one was Johns, right? Uh, is there gaming at Radajacks too? Okay, wouldn't, I, I think the purpose of the, uh, the point of us reviewing, um, the gaming licenses is so we don't have that situation, right? A, a gaming liquor store across the street from another gaming.
I think that's what, no, I know what you're talking about, clusters we talked about.
Right, and so. And so that would fall under the, uh, memorandum of.
Yeah, the, the amendment that we're gonna present to council is gonna have what a definition of a cluster is from our standpoint, from a staffing standpoint. We're gonna try and work in that, identify that whatever the feet, square feet are away from something, we haven't gotten there yet. Um, at that point, I don't think we can make the statement right now that it's, it's contrary to what the moratorium was going to put into new language, until we see the new language.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, one, Radajacks has machines currently, right? And so does. And so does Best Market, right? And now.
And, and Johns had it too, they just haven't.
But they don't have the machines.
Right. They just don't have, but they have the license.
Correct.
They can go out and apply for it tomorrow, and there's nothing we can do.
Correct, but when the machines go up, I think the lights go up with the machines, and I think we were trying to make sure that everything wasn't lit up like Vegas. So, I think that, that there is another cluster that we have to look at, and if we go ahead and grant her this license now, then we have to undo it, right? Instead of just maybe being patient and looking at that cluster right there, cause it's, I mean, it's like three gamins right there.
I, I, I think having the, um, amending language for the ordinance, that's the point I was trying to bring up, for the same thing. If we had the amending language with the ordinance at the same time this going before council, we'd be fine. It'd be, it'd be a clear look, you, you could see what you want to see.
Alderman Jackson.
Okay, my, since that's my ward and I have some concerns, and this is the first I'm seeing this. Um, it would've been nice to know that one of my businesses in my ward was transferring things and moving stuff around and and everyone here knows how I feel about liquor and gaming, so. Having said that, I'm gonna ask that this be tabled to the next meeting, because I wanna do some more research. I'm not happy with this all going, this whole GP, the B, I just wanna know specifically what we're going to do, or what is being proposed. Therefore, I'm asking that this be tabled. To the, uh, to another committee meeting.
Second.
Uh, well, I don't think there's a motion in a second, it's just gonna have to be tabled.
Consensus.
Consensus?
Yeah.
I, I could, yeah. Delaying till the next meeting for more discussion under committee.
Okay. Alright. So, uh, I would ask that you would meet with Alderman Jackson, he is the Alderman of that ward to, once you guys later on this, you know, uh, after you sometime next week or this week, meet with Alderman Jackson.
It's gonna have to be next week, I'm out of town the rest of the week.
So, you could ask, so he can have any questions that he might wanna ask also, okay?
If, let me ask the question if I may, i- if the Alderman ends up being comfortable with it, or at least gets his answers that to the questions that he wanted, and, and make his decision from there. Since this was first reading on this, do we put it on committee and then put it on council the same night, because it can always be pulled from the council agenda?
Would that be acceptable, Alderman, or?
I could work with that.
Okay.
As long as I get the answers I need and know what's happening, then I'm good with it.
Alright, alright, then we'll, we'll move forward with that, alright? What I would ask is, I will get, give, give my office a call, and I will make sure that you have his contact information, okay? Alright, we'll move forward from there, alright?
I do.
Alright, you'll get it, you'll get his card.
Never leave home without.
Alright. Then you guys can set up a time to meet.
Yes.
Okay, alright, uh, going on to, uh, item four, like I say, item three has been removed, discussion of status of city code amendment, title eight, chapter seven, liquor control, uh, classifications and fees, creating a BYOB. Bring your own bottle classification. I think Alderman Coleman brought that, or?
Absolutely, um, if you want to add anything to it, if not, we voted up, voted down, right?
It's, no, we're not there yet, the, uh, the, the Alder, I, I shared with Alderman Smith the other day that I, we're pulling together data on pros and cons in the communities for BYOB, what's it do for sales increases, what's it do to uh, incidences, uh, public safety incidences, to put that together, and then we've gotta have legal craft language for the council or the committee to review, to amend the liquor code, so it's, it's, it's not, it's taking time to just pull the data, so it's nothing more than that.
Alderman Jackson.
Again, my feelings with this particular piece of legislation is we're going down a slippery slope. I think we're gonna be opening ourselves up for something that we, uh, can't control, it's gonna be a monster to get back in real land, so I'm very upfront, I'm not hiding anything, I'm totally against this.
Alderman Murphy.
Just to add on to what Alderman Jackson said, um, one of my big concerns about a situation like this, and just with some very preliminary, um, I'll call it research, but very light. My biggest concern, I think, and there are a lot of them, um, is when a, when a, um, when an establishment has a liquor license. Yeah, it's up to the city to manage the licensing and to, I would say, maybe oversee that there are not violations of that license. But the ultimate liability, the ultimate responsibility for what happens at the establishment, especially if they break the rules, is on them. My concern would be that somehow that could shift under these circumstances, even though there'd be a licensing process, that it would be a BYOB license as opposed to a liquor license like the ones that we were just discussing. My concern would be, does that then shift some, all? Some portion of liability then onto the city, more so than that, than there would be with the way the license, licensing process currently exists. That's a huge concern for me, because I really don't think, and I'll put it this way, that we need to borrow trouble, because we have plenty. Um, I'm very, very much against the idea of going forward with this, certainly I wanna review the data. And I'm willing to do that, but just based on what I know so far. Um, I, I don't see where there's a positive side of this, and I see a lot of potential negatives. But the city being, um, held more accountable, um, if there's a violation, if underage liquor is served, if, um, uh, you know, or if underage patrons are served, if there's no staff available to make sure people are not being over served. There's all kinds of stuff that goes along with this, along with, um, you know, monitoring it. And establishments need special training to do that, especially since they don't have a traditional liquor license, like a bar or a restaurant with a bar, what do you have? That, this to me just is, I, I see a huge potential for trouble and no real upside. But I'm, again, I'm still, I'm still gonna review whatever data is presented.
Some, some communities, and it's all about context, it's all about our environment, what we think is acceptable here and not, and then, and as, as the legislative body, that's your choice, the, uh, certainly your choice, the, uh, BYOB have been successful in other communities, uh, communities that are, uh, more restaurant-based, um, the Highwoods of the world, you know, Naperville's in certain part of Naperville. Um, but, uh, we already started working on the data, so we, we just wanna finish the data and give council something to hang their hat on one way or another, so.
Anyone else wanna make any comment before? Alright, finish up and then bring it back to council for, uh, what's your data?
Alright, Mayor, uh, the last one is the, uh, video gaming, the council reviewed the, uh, data that I presented, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, we're in the process of bullet pointing the points that the council brought up and the, uh, points that we put into the, uh, recommendation side of that uh, study on the, uh, uh, gaming in the city of North Chicago. We'll be passing that on to legal for an amendment to the gaming ordinance in the city. That will reflect the items that, uh, were, were recommendations and what came back from council. And then either for council to adopt, or, uh, or, um, council to amend, or move forward to, uh, uh, from committee to council for approval. And that's where we're at, Mister Mayor.
Okay. Um, being there to know whether business under committee of the whole.
I had a question.
Alderman Coleman.
Um, video gaming, one more time, um, what you're gonna do is you're gonna put the amendments together, the wording together?
I put, right now, what we're doing is putting the bullet points on the recommendations that the staff report and from the study gave to the council two, two weeks ago. And then the feedback you gave back to staff, meaning me, we're incorporating it all in bullet points. We'll get it over to the city attorney's office to turn around and look for the legalese to put it into, mold it into something, comes back to co- uh, committee. You guys get to dissect it and say, okay, I don't remember saying this, or did we add this, or can you get a better definition of this, or it's fine. And then from that point, it'll either get tweaked, or, or it'll go to council at two weeks from then.
And just for, um, clarity purposes, um, the whole purpose of the ordinance is to address any clustering issues that we might have with gaming machines being across the lighting of, uh, the hours of service.
Yeah.
Um, just an ordinance put together to try to get a hold on, um, on our gaming situation in North Chicago, we've got a lot of gaming machines, so just so the community knows that this is something that's positive, and this is a study that we've been doing and, and people have spoken about the issue about gaming machines and things of that nature. And this is just our way as a city of addressing those gaming and those liquor licenses throughout our city.
The current, the current ordinance is kind of broad, um, the, after the council's direction on taking a look at this and approving the moratorium almost a year ago. Uh, it was to give it a finer look, um, it will contain, uh, reference to cl- clusters, it will retain to appearance and signage. Uh, that was one thing that was brought up, the lighting, what space you could use for what. Um, also, uh, eliminating, uh, great gaming cafes, though the ones that are, currently exist, exist. And then make a, a call of what primary business and secondary businesses for having gaming.
And just one quick one, then I'm done, and probably grand, well, we can't use the word grandfathering, cause there's not a transfer of liquor license. But, uh, to address situations, um, like with clustering, if you got three of them in one area, then that means when one moves out, that means if you only want two in the area, that's it.
If you only want two in the area, the other one would be eliminated by attrition if, once they gave up their license.
Once they give up, and for businesses, is there any, will there be any wording in there for a special consideration um, for businesses that have been established for a while versus a new business coming in?
It, no, it would be, if, if a business, if a business already has gaming, nothing's gonna happen to that business. They, unless they give up their license and move on, then they, then they lose it, and if it's, and if it's in an area that we have a cluster that we're not comfortable with, they, whoever bought that business would not get the gaming again.
And so, the reason why I'm asking that is, uh, to be more specific, will it address like the Johns Liquor Store issue with the clustering, and you already had the license, but it wasn't applied for, will that question be answered?
The clustering portion will be answered.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, at the next meeting, we will have a better handle on, we'll have more information on the Johns liquor.
Well, you'll, you'll be able to look at the language in the, uh, the recommended language for the amendment and get a sense of where that's at, yes.
Okay, and then I'll just wait for.
On note with that, I know one of, one of the concerns as you're putting this together is that, uh, signage, that was one of our questions. And, and I know that, you know, even though those that are, have already been established uh, are, have flags and things like that out there. We can still make changes to say that no flags are allowed, no lighting in, to some degree, and when they can we give those that are already out there time to adhere to them?
Come into compliance?
Right, because I think those are, need to be addressed also.
Some of those are already out of compliance, they were out of compliance from the start, we just didn't, years ago, didn't do enforcement on it, we were focused on other things. Um, we, we've got appearance requirements for signage and things like that that we can address, and if it's outside that certainly, uh, to your point, Mayor, to go in and flip the switch that quick without allowing, uh, businesses some time to comply. Um, would not be business friendly, so we would take, we would take an approach of, uh, you have to come into compliance, and here's the window, you have to do it.
Right, give them, give them some type of timeframe, though. Alderman.
I, I, I just would advise the committee that when we regulate signs, we have to regulate them without respect to the specific business where the sign is. The, the rules are generally applicable, you can regulate by district, geog- geographically, but you can't regulate based on the nature of the business itself.
No, but we can regulate if we don't have flag signs in our code that's permissible, we can have those removed.
Those are generally applicable rules and they can be removed, absolutely, and you, you can make rules to say you're not allowed to have neon signs in the city if you want to. That's a generally applicable rule, but we get, we can't say.
Specific discriminate.
We can't discriminate against gaming.
I can't say seventeen, seventeen, seventeen street can't have neon signs. Alright, alright.
Um, with the, what about area-specific, let's say no neon signs for gaming on Sheridan Road.
Can't say gaming, you could say just no neon signs.
No neon signs on Sheridan Road.
We can't, that's all we can go, is just no neon signs on Sheridan Road in size and width and color.
You can do sign districts, like you have zoning districts, you can create different rules based on geographic districts?
The, also, I just remind, I take, take this opportunity to remind the council that the council approved the budget tonight, and when that budget was approved, there was money's approved for the appearance code, the commercial appearance code. So we're gonna, we, we've already identified, um, the, I'm sorry, we've already looked at the process, putting out an RFP for an appearance code for our commercial buildings in our commercial districts. And I know that's something members of the council wanted us to make sure we looked at in this budget cycle, so.
Anything else? Alright, entertain a motion to adjourn, the the move by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Smith, that the committee of the whole stand adjourned. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Alright, Madam Clerk, the, I would like to call the judiciary committee meeting to order, roll please.
And Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
We have one item for discussion tonight, which is, uh, discussion review of Brookstone at Cold Park, and I believe Chief of Staff will, uh, lead us through this one.
Um, Mister Chairman, members of the judiciary committee, uh, just a quick update on Brookstone. Brookstone will be going before adjudication both on their public safety compliance and their, their security on May eighth. Uh, in the morning, in the afternoon, they're going on for building code violation. On May eighth, in the morning, in the afternoon, they're going on for building code violations. Correct me if I'm wrong, on April fifteenth, the, Brookstone was issued forty-five or forty-eight violations? Forty-eight violations at seven hundred and fifty dollars a day for non-compliance on issues related to the fire system. So that is, that's been done. We continue to move forward and be aggressive in our enforcement. Also, in speaking to the city engineer today, they just finished up. Final touches to get to the city attorney. The punch list, the remaining issue on the punch list and the cost to do the remaining repairs that were part of the original construction. That should be getting to the city attorney, Simon, asked me for that today and I got response from the city engineer, so we should be getting it this week. And that'll get us to our next steps or at least get us moving towards the direction on the surety bond issue.
I have a question. So when you say there's forty-eight violations. And it's seven fifty a day, is it seven fifty a day per violation or is that all the whole forty-eight?
Per violation.
Clarification.
Per violation.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understand that's what's happening. Oh yeah, very important.
Alderman.
Alderman Smith.
Okay, that's a lot of money adding up. What happens if they don't have enough money to pay for it?
This is how every enforcement process starts. We identify a deficiency, we give them notice of violation, we signal them a citation to come to court. The city's goal is to get compliance. We have seen with this operator that they don't comply voluntarily unless we force them to. So we had to issue a citation to bring them to court. Our goal is for them to fix the sprinkler system and get it a hundred percent compliant. So I, like with the safety issues, we had a fine for the safety issues, the fine was held in abeyance. And they're demonstrating that they're actually following through now while they have, you know, the razor over their head, waiting to see if they actually comply. The same thing might come to pass with the sprinkler system too. But we, they've lost the benefit of the doubt, so we just issue citations and get them to start fixing things.
Yeah, going back to the question though. Thirty days later, forty-five times seven hundred and fifty per day, it's a lot of money. So now they start to comply, now what happens to all of that money that they owe us?
What the, what the hearing officer did last time with the safety order. See, hearing officer entered a judgment and said, I'm not gonna enforce it and make you pay it. We're gonna let you demonstrate that you're gonna spend the money towards compliance instead of paying it towards a fine. So the, the judgment was entered and paused. And so the hearing officer in May might say, I'm entering an order telling you that you're gonna owe X amount of money. But I'm gonna pause it till you prove that you're able to comply and commit to correct, correct the issues.
And then corrected, then it just disappeared?
The hearing officer has the right to get rid of the fine if they diligently come into compliance.
Sometimes, sometimes I've seen, and they did smaller cases, but the hearing officer will give some of the fines still, but not, not all of it. The other thing is if they just outright say, we're not gonna do it. Then we take civil action at that point. We would find them, the hearing officer would, and then whatever action would be taken in civil court. Am I correct on that?
That's right.
Alderman Allen.
Evans.
But that sounds as if it's a game because they can do it all the way up to a certain amount. It's like a save, like a savings.
Yeah.
So they say, well, we did it for forty days, now we're gonna comply. So if we comply, that money that we were supposed to give to the city, we could get to save that money and put it on our buildings. That's what it sounds like you're saying.
We're still collecting a fine, a, a smaller fine. That helps reimburse the city its costs of prosecuting them and making sure they obtain compliance.
So what's that?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
It could be fifteen hundred dollars.
I know what it is. That's what it was. But.
So.
There's nothing for that complex.
If, if the hearing officer believes that this is, you know, their second time. Second, third time, the hearing officer might say, it was fifteen hundred dollars that time, it's three thousand dollars this time. Or they might say it's forty-five hundred dollars because they're frequent flyer. So the bottom line is the city wants to obtain compliance. We want to make sure the people living there are safe in the event an incident occurs. And so we'd rather have them spend the money towards fixing the sprinkler system than simply paying a fine.
But that, that defeats, that, it doesn't make sense because we're not doing anything basically. You're going to the small court here and you're saying, well, we're gonna find you. And then the lady judge, the, the, well, the judge that sits there. She does not enforce this thing hard enough. I don't know if the mayor needs to get involved with it or what, but something has to happen to make that, make them understand. That the city of North Chicago.
Well, I can tell you that. In, in cases where the owner of property demonstrates a good faith effort. That staff gives them more time to comply. In this case, they've lost the benefit of the doubt, they've lost the trust. And so if there's a violation, they get cited immediately. There's no delay. We are being as aggressive as we can in issuing citations where there are violations that are found and bringing them to court as soon as possible.
The, the, the frustration, the frustration that you're expressing, Alderman Evans. It's, it's frustration we sit down and talk about every day. It drives us absolutely crazy on, on that night. I talked to Alderman Allen on a regular basis about what's happening in that complex. It's, it's, I've never in my career had to deal with a landlord such as this. We are, we got passed last week and this week's affording us the opportunity to reach out to. Lake County Housing Authority, not North Chicago Housing Authority, but Lake County Housing Authority and get back with IDA on, on where we're at on this. We know we're going after the surety at the seven million dollars that we have in there for the repairs to the building. Once we do everything that we do, Taylor and his team, yeah, it rests with the adjudication officer. And the decision that they make, number one, we would always want compliance over penalty. But this is, this is a landlord who's not going, or is, is struggling to find a way to comply.
Alderman Allen been hearing the same thing since they built that location. We've been hearing these same stories coming back over and over, over and over. I mean. They agreed with Alderman Allen and the mayor about what they was gonna do. They have not met anything and it's, and it's gonna get worse, summertime is getting ready to come in. Those people gonna be outside.
Right.
What's gonna happen then?
I, I don't want to disagree with the history there. They're absolutely, they've had a, it's a horribly problematic landlord. But if you recall, and at the December adjudication, the hearing officer entered an order. Mandating they meet specific deadlines to comply with safety improvements. They've met every deadline so far. There's one more deadline that they have to meet, which is to install a flock camera. And in order to install a flock camera, they need the cooperation of the Lake County Housing Authority. So we're trying to coordinate with the Lake County Housing Authority to get them to give permission to install the flock camera. But other than that, they've met all the other itemized steps required to, in that safety order. So we've demonstrated that, that we're, we've lost patience. We've demonstrated the seriousness of our effort. And at least with respect to the safety stuff, they've taken demonstrable steps to comply. The surety issue is still another problem. And as soon as we have the engineers' report on what the status quo is on the punch list, we're prepared to file a complaint.
Now, here's, here's my question, again from the public safety side. Because obviously we all now know that the sprinkler system doesn't work. Where does that, where does that, number one, where's that put us as a city if something happens? Someone gets killed over there because of the sprinkler system. Does that make us vulnerable for any, any form of liability or anything? No? Okay, but somebody dying over there and me knowing about it isn't gonna make me feel good. We're not moving fast enough.
Right.
To address, this is a major issue.
It's a major issue.
Okay, the, the punch list to me is not major right now. This is a public safety matter and to me, this is a public safety crisis. And this needs to be addressed primarily to me. That should be done now. Now, if we are able to take money from the surety bond. And get a company to come in and rectify this, I'm all in favor of that. If that's a legal ramification of what we can do, if we have that authority. But this is major because something's gonna happen over there. And I'm sorry, it's not gonna get it if someone lost their loved one. And I can't sit by and just, just say, well, you know, we're waiting for the hearing officer. What can we legally do, counsel?
If the city declared the whole, if the, if the city declared every premises, every rental premises where the sprinklers didn't work. To be uninhabitable because of the sprinkler problem. You'd have to kick everyone out. Until they had it fixed. So you'd have to find new homes for all those people while the repairs are going. No, it wouldn't, it would not be our responsibility, but I mean, but like, as you know, the city always tries to connect people with social service assistance when this happens. And so. It does create additional burden for the city to assist those people. Do you know what the status of the repairs are?
I mean, how far is, is the sprinkler system down the list? I mean, are we kicking this one down?
No, we've been, we've been on it every day.
Okay. I just want to know because this is the first hearing of, well, a sprinkler is, you know, anything else, okay. It's been, well, I'm saying, it's still bad enough. It's getting worse because they're not addressing it. So if it was two weeks ago, they should have done something.
It happened since the last meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, because I was gonna say, I don't remember that one on my notes, but.
Yeah, just to clarify, of those forty violations, many of those are very simply resolved by, like putting stickers on the fire control room doors. So a lot of those are really low hanging fruit that can be accomplished really easily. They have gone as far as signing a new contract with a new fire alarm monitoring company, FSS. So they did proactively seek that out and sign that contract.
I want to make sure it's clear though, not to give them too much latitude. It, it appears according to our fire inspector that they never had monitoring before.
So we are continuing to check with them on that. The sprinkler issue is not as extensive as all the units in all the different buildings. There are quite a few buildings out there. I forget the exact count off the top of my head. But it's specifically to certain type of model out there. It's not all the buildings, because not all the buildings need to have sprinklers out there because of the way they were constructed. So it is limited in scope to a, to where it kind of sounded very extensive. It's, I think, four buildings if I recall correctly. Some of them was just a matter of a valve being put in the correct direction and turning the system on. So those very well could be already addressed. We're just waiting to confirm with the property owner to let us on the property and confirm those violations.
I, I just, everybody, Taylor, you talking about, it ain't a big problem about putting a stick on this here or putting, it is a big problem. You talking about safety. And you sit and tell me that it's okay about not having a labor on something. If I go in electrical, if I ain't got some of the labor, I hit the wrong button, I can get shocked to death. So don't tell me about what's not. If it is not that concerned with them, why ain't you got it fixed? And I won't accept what you just said to me just while we're telling the city council, don't make, it's okay, it's just a little problem. We've been having problems for three years. I'm tired of hearing you all talking about it's no problem. Safety is number one over here in, in North City, North Chicago. If you make safety the forty you, you got the wrong job here. Safety is number one in our city. And attorney, we need to get, get on, get on the ball and get going here because I'm tired of you every, talking about, we gonna look at this, look at this. I'm tired of this here. Three years we've been talking about this and we did hardly nothing about this. But if somebody died, oh, we gonna get on the ball on this now. It's unacceptable. If you can't get it done, let's find somebody who can get the job done. I'm tired. I had enough of this here going backwards and forwards. You talking about fifteen hundred dollars to that, that fifty million dollar company up there, they paid fifteen hundred dollars the last time they paid. Fifteen hundred, that's nothing for a million dollar company, fifty million. Where would they get paid? And we talking about, we talking fifteen hundred dollars. That's nothing. They paid him, gonna walk the way. But you ask people who got old homes around here, you wanna find them seven hundred dollars and you wanna stick to that point? Or some business around here, a little small business, you want somebody suffering, having a problem with this. It's unacceptable today. We need to do something about these problems here. Let's quit talking about it and do something about it. We've been talking for three years. And you see they're not doing nothing. It's the same problem. Every time you come, we talking the same problem. You talking, tired of hearing us complain about the same problem? If you can't do the job, that's fine. If you can't do the job, let's find somebody who can. I ain't mad, we be mad at you outside, we can't handle the job. I, I agree with you. These people are crying to me every week. We only trying to talk to these people, trying to say, just be patient, patient. Their patience is gone. You go, you back, everybody go back to their home, they enjoying, they say, okay, but they don't feel safe over there. Some fire catch up coming. We talking about putting a sprinkler system in every house being built around here now. And here this fire problem come and tells them that the fire system, sprinkler system doesn't work because of this and that. That making any sense to you guys? That making any sense? Y'all, we passed some codes back here last year about sprinkler system. And we know they, they not working, they over there in, in that, am I right or wrong? Do you know or not know it?
Yeah, we know it. That's why we did the violations, but with respect, Alderman, I, I didn't say it was not a problem. There were items on that checklist that are much easier to accomplish.
But I'm just telling you, I'm not happy with it.
I understand, sir.
I'm not happy. Because these people feel like they want to be safe in their homes and they not feeling safe in their home.
And I could tell you from staff's perspective, we are taking this hard to the adjudication hearing officer and we will be advocating for the same things you've just discussed.
Okay, come and say, I'm gonna give you two thousand dollars.
Alderman, I, I absolutely share your frustration. You and I've talked countless, number of times about this. The, the one thing I, I have to say is. There's only so much, I don't care who the staff member is, there's only so much staff can do. All we can do is write it, and we are pitfalls on a bone when it comes to writing the violations at that place. The problem ends up with the court, the, the hearing officer.
Okay.
On whatever that hearing officer decides to levy as a fine. And, and as we, you and I have shared on more than one occasion, Alderman, the only way these people are gonna listen is if you get in their pocket.
That's how you gonna listen, give me pocket.
Because any other way, they're not. And, and the, and the mayor's been very clear about the surety issue taking too darn long. We hope that this punch list is the last stop before we can start tapping that surety. The, as soon as we heard about the, the sprinkler systems and the concern. Staff was out there, the fire inspector was out there. Our hands are tied too, to, to some extent. I mean, and, and part of that also falls with the fact that it's, it's not North Chicago, it's Lake County Housing Authority. And it's the state housing and it's HUD. And, you know, we had our hands tied by bureau, government bureaucracy, which we know is a pain in the behind. But it's, there's no other way to describe it. We're frustrated. I have my opinion of the Benoit Group. I have my opinion of the management company that's on the ground, the boots on the ground there. We just don't know what to do anymore, it other than keep documenting, keep documenting, keep, they are so tired of hearing from us, they don't even return our calls.
So, so let me ask this question. I know I, the two Aldermen have something. And, and. It is, obviously you could tell that's, we thought it was gonna be just make a report and go from there. But when you find out things get worse from, from two weeks ago. I was hoping and praying that things were getting better, but they're not. Maybe this is a Michael Jackson crazy thought, but I'm gonna put it out there anyway. And attorney, you can tell me. Is there any way legally we can hold the Lake County Housing Authority liable for anything since they have a say? Or can we, like, like anybody's doing with the president, can we sue them? And I need an answer to that. If you can't give it to me today, two weeks from now, it's fine to whoever's here. But what can we do to force the hand of Lake County Housing Authority? Because if they're the fiduciary over this project and this mess, how do we get them to work faster to get compliance?
We will explore every option to put pressure on that premises to obtain and maintain compliance. Whether it's against Benoit Group, if it's possible to do against Lake County Housing, so they put pressure on Benoit Group. We will pursue all the legal avenues.
Alderman, Taylor just informs me that with this last violation, we didn't just serve Benoit, we also served the Lake County Housing Authority.
Excellent. Put teeth in it. We need to go to the press. Whatever it needs to do, make them do their job of something that they own, that's in our community. That we're gonna be, even though we may not be legally responsible, the residents don't think so. They're not looking at Lake County Housing Authority, they're not looking at North Chicago Housing Authority. They're looking at the city of North Chicago, and what are you gonna do for it? And that's the way I look at it when I hear people call and complain, and I'm like, well, that's not us. But, you know, it's like everything else we see.
And, and, and your points, your points, well taken, Alderman. It's the, when I express the layers of bureaucracy, it's not to say it's not our problem, it is our problem. These are our citizens. Um, you represent them, they depend on city services. What we're saying is, we're handcuffed to some degree by, by, by the, by the. Yeah, by, by some of the stuff that's tossed our way. And it's frustrating for us. There's nobody on staff that doesn't wanna see that place come into compliance. We, we've expended a lot of resources, we're tracking hours, legal hours, engineering hours, staff hours to build to that surety. Cuz we're spending too much time when there's a big community here that all needs our help.
Alderman Coleman, I think you had something you wanted to address.
Yeah, um, sometimes we do have to know our position. As city leaders, we are responsible for the quality of life for all of our residents and the safety of all of our residents. Everybody's responsibility, isn't it, Alderman up here, is for the safety of the residents. With that being said, um, the way the process normally works is. We go and we put orange stickers on doors, and that's what happens when you have uh, life codes. Like fires, sprinklers, uh, things that um, are life and death. Then you just go, you put a sticker on there and it says uninhabitable. And what that does is that forces the landlord to either shit or get off the block, right? I, I think that's where we're at with this thing. But if that's what you do, you put an orange now to the fact that we have to find all of these people homes. That's a good thing, because their quality of life at this point. And if we're not doing anything about their quality of life, then the best that I could do is hopefully put them in a situation. Where they can go find another home, where they can be safe, and they can have a fire sprinkled, and they can have a quality of life. So I don't feel bad about uh, not allowing our residents to stay in homes. That are safety hazards, right? So, um, we have to start putting orange stickers on doors. And we're worried about the eviction process. There's an eviction process. People don't get put out overnight. They have to go through the county, and during that process, the landlords, they try to rectify the situation before it has to come to that. But at this point, I have to agree with the other Aldermen. We have to put some orange stickers on doors and tell them if they're not in compliance. Then that, eventually what happens is if they get too many orange stickers on doors, they leave anyway. The whole complex shuts down because they're not making enough revenue. Because they had too many orange stickers on too many doors and too many vacancies, so they leave themselves. Now, if they wanna be in compliance, then they're gonna do everything that it takes to get those orange stickers off the doors when out there apart. To me, we need to put some more stickers on doors.
Alderman. Is there a way, is there a way that we can stop having that adjudication court? Or is there a way that you, the staff, could give these people a fine much larger? Recommend a fine so that this group can see that we're for real.
We're, we're capped at the amount of dollars we can do. It's seven hundred and fifty, I think I believe our cap is. Can we, I guess the question is, can we just bypass and go straight to a circuit court?
Can you refresh your memory? There was a fine entered in the safety violation in December, right? It was like twenty-five thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head.
It was tens of thousands of dollars, and the judge said, this is the fine. Now you have a chance to come into compliance, and if you don't come into compliance, you're gonna fine you the entire twenty-five thousand dollars, whatever the amount was. So, the only reason that they got the fine reduced is because they met nine of the ten steps in that safety plan. They did invest money towards the safety requirements that the city gave them to do. So, we want them spending money on compliance. Come May, if they haven't fixed every problem, we will ask the hearing officer for seven hundred and fifty dollars. For every violation, for every day the violation continued. That adds up very quickly. And we will, we will ask the hearing officer to remember that this is not their first rodeo. This is not the first time they've had a violation. We'll ask them to once again emphasize compliance. But make the fine that remains in place bite deeper and punish them more.
No, well, what I'm saying is, the fine is, okay, seven hundred and fifty.
No matter where we go, whether we go to circuit court or adjudication, our fine is capped by the ordinance.
But can you receive the money? If you doing seven hundred and fifty dollars a day, why can't we get a check? That month for that fine?
That's what the hearing officer's gotta order.
The, the, the point is, every dollar they give us in a fine is the dollar they don't spend towards compliance.
But that's just, we, we're just saying something. We're not, I'm saying, if you make them people pay that seven hundred.
You want bite, you want bite behind the bark, behind the bark is what you're saying.
That will bite them. Just talking about it is different. If you force them to give you that money per day, per month, like they should, instead of, cuz we been talking about seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. For, ever since they said it, but we have not received anything. When we receive it, it's gonna make a difference. Cuz anybody would not wanna, I don't care what group you are, they're not gonna wanna continue to give the city that type of money every day. And if they did get that type of money, guess what?
Broadway?
I'm gonna repeat my, I'm, I'm gonna repeat this one more time, okay? Fees, okay? It's not gonna work. Fees, what, what happens is fees become passed through, right? Meaning if I'm the owner of the apartment complex, right? I don't ever take money out of my pocket. If the city wants to charge me twenty thousand dollars, I don't care because I'm gonna turn around and put that on my residence. I collect money from my residence to cover that twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's controlled, controlled rent on the housing there.
What I'm saying is, what, what I'm saying is, they're gonna pass it through. They're not going to go into their checking account. They're gonna find a way to either skim a corner, like he was saying. We're gonna skim this corner because we have a ten thousand dollars review, right? Investors look at what's called rent roll costs, right? Meaning how many vacancies are in that complex? So if you got a twenty unit and ten of them are vacant, right? That means your vacancy rate is high, and it doesn't make that building sellable. So it decreases the value. Once that building is no longer sellable and the values begin to decrease, they put themselves out of business. If you don't want them here, you have to orange sticker their doors. They did it in Chicago, they do it in major projects, if the, the buildings. I, I think we did it with the Marion Jones, I wanna say, with the old bricks that were up there. We went through and we were closing those brick apartment buildings down, right? One by one, right? And evicting them. How do we get the people out from Marion Jones?
I mean, that was part of the, uh, yeah, that was, that was part of uh, Brookstone.
Right, but what, what was the process of getting rid of them?
Yeah, I think housing, uh, Lake County Housing helped to find them, knew how it's been. Yeah, it was.
So, so it is doable. So if we came through with orange stickers, then they could actually move. Right? It's already, we already did it one, see, this is my point. We already did it. That's my whole point. We did it once, we can do it again. We did it with Marion Jones projects, we went in one by one, building by building, and we put them out. How we did it, I'm not gonna go into details. I don't, I don't wanna lose the, the point of we can move complexes out. But we have to put them in violation first.
Mayor, mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm walking right off of, or I'm sorry, chairman. I'm, I'm working right off of what Alderman Coleman says here, and I'm asking the city attorney for direction on this, before I step on my feet. What am I supposed to call, uh, contact Lake County? And tell them that we're gonna declare, I asked the estimated units, I just asked Taylor the estimated units that may be impacted here, and it's uh, potentially twenty-five. Uh, we'll get a firm number, and I'll call Lake County tomorrow and tell them, put them on notice that we're gonna declare the property uninhabitable. And they'll have to find location for other, for these residents.
If, if it's uninhabitable, it's uninhabitable. And we, we treat this building like we would treat any other building in the city, right? I think so. If we, if, if another building had the same condition and we would declare that uninhabitable, then. This feels.
For the, for this, for the sake of the fire system, the other stuff's maintenance stuff that you just turn around and you, you, you should be repairing. But I.
Maintenance stuff's not life safety.
Right, that's my point. So if we take the twenty-five units, I'd call up uh, the chair or the executive director at the Lake County Housing Authority tomorrow. And I'll also make a phone call to the county board chair to keep her in the loop. And tell them that I'm, we're uh, we're giving them uh, twenty-four hours, we're declaring the property uninhabitable. They're gonna have to find places for the residents to, to stay until the place becomes habitable.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I think that's what, uh, senior, uh, I, I, I think that's what, I think that's what the Aldermen are trying to say. Let's put somebody in there and let them know we for real, like, well, either, you gonna do what you gonna do, but be for real. And I think, uh, our, our, our senior Aldermen, everybody's on the same page that we're, we're done, like, leave, I mean.
All right, I'd like to, I, okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to review that with the, with the council and the mayor. Uh, on the approach tomorrow, it could be a documented letter, uh, on letter, on letterhead, whatever we have to do, just to have the conversation.
I would say we need.
And we'll move forward with it. We'll move forward with it.
We gotta let them know we're for real, and, and we're not just gonna be pushover knockoffs. And, and pardon expression, we're not gonna be pumped.
We need, we.
We need to do something for the people that live there, because when something happens. They're gonna turn their fingers and point at us and like, well, you know, the city talked about that for three and a half years. They knew about all these problems, but guess what? They didn't do anything.
The uh. I, I hope the council recognizes that there's nobody, you, you all know our staff, and you all know our staff well enough. That none of us wouldn't wanna do what's right by the constituency, and our hands are tied, uh, are tied in, in some of these areas. Um, that being said, I just want the council, and especially Alderman Allen, to recognize, because it's his word. That uh, once, w- we can't, we can't cry wolf on this. So if we're gonna turn around and say it's uninhabitable, I just wanna make sure that the council. And the council realizes that twenty-five unit, potentially twenty-five units, I, that's the number we're using. Twenty-five units are gonna have residents that need to have housing. So I just, I just, just wanna make sure council's aware of that. Not that it's not the right thing to do, that's not what I'm saying. I just wanna let council know that, that's what, something we'd have to respond to.
Alden Smith?
We make that happen, all these people have to leave, how does that fall back on us? Cuz we're gonna get pushed back.
Are we gonna get pushed back from some of the constituency that doesn't wanna vacate the property? Is that what you're saying?
Where they gonna go? I mean, that's gonna, I understand we're looking out for them, but they're in the situation now. They had to go a different school, like, all this and all.
Well, there, there, there's, there's a whole, and, and that's what makes this frustrating and makes it com- complicated and frustrating is this. We're gonna turn around and we're gonna say, you have to vacate, like, Lake, Lake County Housing Authority. And this is just supposition on my part. Lake County Housing Authority's gonna turn around and say, let me get in touch with Benoit Group. Benoit Group's gonna do what they do best, and that's nothing. So they're gonna do that, we're gonna have to displace these people. There will not be any support from the Benoit Group. There, there is a potential of no support from the Benoit Group. There's a potential of little support or resources from Lake County Housing Authority. And the city staff will be working closely with our intergovernmental partners, and I say that meaning Lake, uh, Waukegan Township. And other entities to find temporary residents for these people. They are gonna have to remove whatever belongings that they need, medications, things like that, pets, children, and they're gonna have to get relocated. It, I'm not saying it's not the right thing to do, but I just wanna make sure the council knows how the resource, how this can potentially go. The pushback that may be received, and the response that our sta-, our city staff, our city resources are going to have to expend to make this happen. Again, it's not that we're not saying it's not the right thing to do, we would never say that because we understand what we're up against.
And not only.
But I think it's important to know where this could fall.
And not only just taking the responsibility of it, but as we always do, we wanna push things forward or put, delay it. So we can look further into it. So I'm saying, we're trying to give you the green light to move forward on, but we have, we haven't looked at the repercussions of us doing that. Now we have twenty-five people who have nowhere to go, we, the money that's gonna be, need to be spent. We haven't looked at all of those details of moving people. Not saying it shouldn't be done, but again, we still need to look at the whole pie before we just take a slice of the pie.
Um, there's also, uh, they all receive emergency vouchers. We just did this, people, for the Marion Jones projects. They've all received emergency vouchers, and they can move anywhere in the city of Lake County. Actually, some of the people were so grateful to leave Marion Jones projects because they were able to go to Gurnee and other school districts. And get outside of our school districts, so some of them, they didn't even apply to come back, but.
We talked about availability as well.
So, hold on, hold on. So what I'm saying is, we're getting into the emotional side of things as city leaders. And what we mean by emotional side of things is, it's our responsibility to make sure they, that they have a fire alarm. That, that's it. I mean, it, it, why would we put them out in the building without a fire alarm?
The perfect, the perfect situation here is to tell Lake County, if Benoit Group's not gonna do it, you better get somebody in there to put in the fire system. Cuz we're gonna end up displacing twenty-five families. Lake County Housing Authority does whatever it does and make, gets the resources that it needs and goes in and then leans the property. Or does whatever it has to against Benoit Group. I don't know how that's gonna all play out. There's, there's a half a dozen scenarios that are rolling in my head right now. One of them is I'm not sleeping tonight, so, but, but I mean, in, in, in essence, it's, it's something we gotta think through. Cuz no matter what we do there, if we turn around and execute this and displace those, we, we have, we have a moral obligation. To make sure those twenty-five are taken care of, that twenty-five, we have a moral obligation to do that more than anything else. Um, life safety's one thing, but if we're displacing them, we, we got an obligation. And I don't know that, I'm sorry, Alderman, you talked about the vouchers. I can't speak to that. I don't know if the Marion Jones vouchers were part of a HUD plan, it was outside the scope of the city, I, that I'm not familiar with, so.
And we can always uh, revisit it, right? After you have that conversation and say, these twenty-five people, and they say, you know what? Put them out. You can always come back and we can always say, okay.
I can pick up the phone, call everyone in the Aldermen, say, this is where it's at. What do you got, what do you think?
Sorry, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I think this is something that, you know, we have been working very hard to try to get them in compliance. And, and I, and I understand what you're saying, you know, just tag them and tell them you, you gotta go. But you're right, that's, you know, it's gonna fall back on North Chicago. It's not gonna fall on Lake County Housing, it's not gonna fall on Benoit. It's gonna fall on, North Chicago just kicked twenty-five people out of Brookstone. Uh, you know, and, and even it could, you might say, because of what the situation is. But do we first maybe address Lake County Housing and says, hey, you've got so much time, ten days? Something, let them make a, make them aware that we're gonna give you just a, you know.
Two weeks.
Okay, I'm just saying, give it, give them two weeks to say, this have to be remedied, or we will tag those people and, I mean. Cuz if you give them twenty-four hours, I mean, that's not gonna, I mean, that's, you know, you're, but, you know, let's give, give them a time. And then, then give us staff a, a, hopefully a, some time and legal to, to try to get this resolved. But if not, move forward. Give us staff a, a, hopefully a, some time and legal to, to try to get this resolved, but if not, move forward on it.
It'll also, thank you, mayor, it would also allow us, uh, um, a little, little room to put a contingency plan together on. What, what happens if we do have to relocate, to talk to Waukegan, to talk, this situation may be coming up, but we're gonna orange tag the, the buildings, where do we put these people, so. Um.
So, so let me ask this question, since that was posed by, by the mayor, is obviously giving them time. Is there a time, uh, that the council would adhere to? Just as a consensus, I know, uh, Alderman Evans don't like that word, but, I mean, in this situation, I mean, we do have to be. Fair, if you wanna call it that, um, but again, we talk about twenty-five units which got twenty-five families. Um, so the question comes about is how much time do we allow staff to, to, uh, follow up? And again, I don't want it to be a knee jerk reaction, but I still want it to be something that is going to be considered, we're not playing.
Well, first of all, I don't think we, it's gonna be our decision on who's gonna leave out of that, the apartment buildings. Because they're gonna still have to go through whatever group owns that, that location.
Not if it's uninhabitable.
Or, well, if, um, if it's uninhabitable, but. Right now, you guys should be doing that without us in common. See, that should have been, uh, anyway, cause that's what has been leading up to it. Because as, um, as I said before. We've been working on this for the past three years, so if you know there are some units that's not livable in it, why are they still living in it?
I, I think the. Because you can have smoke detectors and act means of egress and, and heat detectors that are working and you don't need, there are communities that don't, don't have the sprinkler system.
Okay, well, you're talking about moving twenty-five families out, so that's, okay.
We have to verify what the definition is of, of habitable is.
Right.
For those units, right, exactly. Yeah, no, exactly.
So, question I had is, are we looking at giving them a three week comeback and let us know what's going on? Two weeks, three weeks, what are you looking?
I just wanna know whether the staff, since the staff is the one that'll be doing it.
Right, I mean, they are carrying the pails, so it's, it, you gotta be fair to them.
Be fair to them.
I think it's, I think it's, um, in order for us to do it effectively, um. I, I think I still need to make the call to Lake County Housing Authority and just turn around and say, listen, we're getting ready to declare these units in, uh, uninhabitable. And, and the city council's not playing on this, so you guys could decide what you wanna do, but we're declaring it uninhabitable. Um, I would say as much time as possible for us to, I would ask this latitude, let's target two weeks. If we don't have a contingency plan fully established to take care of those twenty-five families, we'll ask for a couple days, a little bit, few days extension. But we'll go with a two week target, with the option for additional time based on what our intergovernmental partners will do to support us in relocating families, if it comes to that.
So, so let me offer a counter offer to your offer, uh, we negotiate now, so, so let's, let's go with, with thirty days, okay? I think that'd be more fair because I don't need you, or wouldn't like to have you have to come back and then you have some more time, so let's say, like we do with our bills. Not to exceed thirty days.
Okay.
If that's something that's a consensus, you know.
I think offering January has to do that.
That will also capture the adjudication date that occurs.
On May eighth.
Within the next thirty days.
So, will that be, I mean, generally, will that be good so we can carry on, I, I didn't think this was gonna be a hot potato, no pun intended, but I see it is. But it's, it's now knowing that things we didn't know, the whole situation with public safety, and then I feel amiss. That if we didn't do something and something happened that, you know, I wouldn't sleep at night, you think you would? Uh, no. When somebody got hurt or someone died.
As aside, as aside to the direction that the, that the committee's giving staff, um, I'll talk to, uh, city attorney as well as about. Um, realizing, uh, monetary, uh, fines.
Okay.
Versus putting, keeping some of that in abeyance.
Okay, last, last, uh, so we can journey on here.
Just for clarity, we're gonna find out which houses are inhabitable first and get us a report on that, correct?
We're gonna identify what units could be considered uninhabitable.
Right.
Meaning that it's life safeties, so, again, if smoke detectors, heat detectors, things like that are in there, it doesn't make it uninhabitable.
Right.
We determine which units, how many are uninhabitable, those are the units I bring back to Lake County Housing Authority saying, that's, we're gonna make a declaration on these units and here's why. They've already been served, so it's not like it's gonna get blindsided. And then we turn around at that point and formulate a plan of, okay, if we execute the orange sticker for these units. How many of those do, uh, how do we, which partners do we get involved with it and how do we?
Because what I'm hearing is. The issue is the water sprinklers. To me, I don't think that would make a, a unit uninhabitable. Just water sprinklers, period, because there's homes that don't even have water sprinklers.
It depends on what other safety measures are there.
To, to.
Size for the sprinklers.
Correct, that's.
If they have no smoke detector.
Right, right.
Also.
Right.
And no sprinkler, and if, if there's no way to. Alarm the family that a fire's broken out, that's a problem.
To your point, and it's not to say that there wouldn't be a smoke detector in the unit, it's the smoke detector working.
Yeah, that's true, as people.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's the issue, I'm assuming those are hardwired and, okay, you could have a smoke detector and a heat detector, but if they're not working. So we would have to look at the units that are impacted and see if in fact they have working, uh, alternate equipment.
When you say alternate equipment, that could include fire extinguisher.
Now, the, it has to be, yeah, it has to be automatic.
I'm throwing it out there.
Yeah, automatic suppression or an alert.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that, so, I'm sorry, Alderman, go ahead.
Alright, so just to be crystal clear. The water sprinkler is not set up, it's not working, but they have a, um, smoke detector that's electrical. And. Other than that. It's basically good, is that correct?
Correct.
I, I, I don't wanna speculate, we need to look at each. They're gonna look at it, I don't wanna predict the results.
So, at this point, obviously, there's gonna be, we're, we're looking at giving thirty days to chief of staff and staff. To do, uh, follow up and come back with, uh.
Right.
With the report on, on the status of what they found for, uh, Brookstone.
May I make this commitment to the, uh, council that, uh, as we take our steps on this, I'll send emails, just update, up to date, update everyone.
Hey, anyone else other than that, I'm looking for a motion to close the judiciary committee meeting at this time.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, thank you, no, thank you, I'm sorry, give you more work. Uh, it's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Allen to adjourn the judiciary committee meeting, uh, roll call, Madam Plur.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Okay, at this time, I recall the, uh, adjournment of the judiciary committee and thank you all for, uh. A good conversation and hopefully we can make some.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Alright, I'd like to open up economic development planning and zoning committee, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Alright, we have two items on the agenda, the first is discussion, um, and ordinance approving certain sign variations of North Chicago. Twenty twenty-three LLC at thirty-one hundred Skokie Highway, discussion and ordinance. And ordinance approving a special use permit for the Adelante Center at sixteen oh six Sheridan Road. For entre- entrepreneur, entrepreneurship, operating a community resource center, Taylor.
Hey, thank you, Chairman Smith, first item here is related to the Compass Travel Center development out there on Skokie Highway. Uh, petitioner who is present here this evening, or representative is here this evening, uh, they're seeking three different sign variations. One is to allow for additional wall signage, by ordinance, they would be permitted up to twelve wall signs at the building. They are seeking fourteen wall signs, so two additional signs. They are also seeking a variation from the maximum height of a prestanding sign, which is by ordinance twenty-five feet. They're seeking a fifty foot tall sign, and then the last one is a monument sign with an area of two hundred forty square feet. Ordinance allows for up to two hundred square feet. Uh, this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at public, uh, hearings on April fourteenth, March tenth, and March twenty-fourth. After those hearings, the PZC recommended unanimously, uh, the variations for approval. Um, as you recall, this project started out as the Ricky Rockets', uh, gas station proposal, it's now with a different group, Compass. Uh, I'd say that the scale and, uh, location and size of these size between those originally proposed to those that are, uh, proposed now are very comparable. So what Ricky Rockets had originally proposed is pretty comparable, and it's got scale and size to what Compass is proposing. But again, petitioners here, if there's any questions.
Alderman Jackson.
Okay, so. Just so I'm clear, and I know we discussed this and other thing with the signage, there'll be no neon anything out there, am I correct? No neon signs like?
Uh, no neons proposed as part of this signed package, yeah.
I just wanna make sure, cause I know neon is a big thing that we're trying to get away from and make sure we stay away from that, alright. I'm good. Speaking of the signs, I know you said fifty feet, so, I'm familiar with that area. And I know those hotels, they wanted to put up signs higher than what they have now. So would that be a conflict if we allow Compass to do their fifty feet? And days in and sleep in and sicko and all of them come and ask for.
It's not a.
Higher signs.
It's not a conflict because it's based on that, the property, property itself, and so in this case, the property is, the PZC recommended, took, took those factors into consideration. So, in this case, it's a very large parcel that they've assembled there, that's taken into consideration, the setback of the building structure itself. All these kinda factors come into that determination, so it does not set a precedent necessarily that every business along that corridor would be, um, warranted additional.
But I am aware, I'm just saying, cause I know they did come in here and ask for tall signs, so.
So just for clarity. Let's say the hotel come, cause we were changing the ordinance, correct?
This variation would create an ordinance just for that specific property. It would not change the code as it relates to any other property.
So, going back to, um, Alderman Evans.
They only screens the signs.
So. Changing it, does that open up the door for us to change it for the hotels and so forth? Cause we're changing the ordinance, so let's say they come back now, they wanna have a change, or just because it's on that property, we're able to change it.
Approval of this ordinance would not change it for any other property and it would not put into action any other steps to authorize additional signage on any other property. For that, city council would need to direct staff to, uh, pursue a text amendment to the city code.
And they would have to come in and make a, same, uh, another appeal.
An application for that process, yeah.
Any more questions? Mayor.
Oh, my name is Robert Hugulet, I'm the attorney for the petitioner, but thanks for considering us, uh, tonight. There was a, there was a, an agreement.
Name again?
My name is Robert Hugulet, H U E L E T. Uh, apparently there was a, an agreement with the mulch company, which is just to the, to the west of us, with a prior developer. And it, it had to do with, um, that developer agreeing with the mulch company to put their signage on top of the marquee mid-rise signage. And we, we don't want, we, uh, don't wanna allow that, we think it would be a detriment to our development. We have, we have discussed with them, allow, allowing them to put a monument sign on our, our, our property without charging them. And, uh, that's where it stands.
Yeah, just second, and. Gotta ask the next question, the monument sign, is that? Bigger than a yard sign?
Well, it would be, monument sign that we would envision would be eight feet tall. Fifty feet on each side, so five, five by ten. And, uh, so we're, we're waiting to hear back from them, but we, we don't, we don't wanna delay the, the consideration.
I, and I agree, I, I, but I hope that you guys will come to an agreement in that regard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more questions? Alright, next item.
Next item's a continuation of the discussion from last committee meeting, this is a, uh, ordinance approving a special use permit for the Adelante Center at sixteen oh six Sheridan Road. Um, last committee meeting, this was discussed, is a, just to refresh you, it's a community resource facility. Essentially a food pantry that's being proposed at that location, the petitioner was present, uh, not see anyone from that group here this evening. But, uh, Alderman Coleman had asked that, uh, they reach out and, and because it's in his ward and wanted additional correspondence there and then. Communication about some concerns within his ward, uh, that communication did happen, I can confirm that there was, uh, some email exchange there. Um, but other than that, um, staff really has, has no further update on that, but.
Alderman Coleman, how did the conversation go?
Um, we just had a conversation, it really didn't address the traffic flow issue. Um, I don't know if there is a, a dress for the traffic flow issue, I know it backs up to the pantry up the street. Uh, and it's on Sixteenth and Sheridan, and it narrows down to two lanes there. Um, one side is actually parking and, so it, on Sixteenth and Sheridan, it bottles next right there and kinda curves right there. So, I don't, was there any other drafts other than?
Only what he sent you, yeah.
Okay, and what did you think of it as the zoning, um? Your zoning board, they approved it, I mean.
Yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission did talk about some traffic concerns as you brought up as well. Um, some of their concerns were about stacking with the intersection, being fairly close to the, the exit of the facility there. Uh, having the two entrances straight on the Sheridan, um, and just kinda generally related to the older development pattern of this site, just a little bit tighter of a parking lot quarters and, and the like. Um. They, they felt comfortable recommending it for approval, uh, that's why we brought it forward as such, as a, a proposed ordinance for approval. Um, but they did discuss some of those concerns as well during the public hearing.
Have you discussed any of those concerns since me and him had a discussion and we're emailing?
I have not pursued that item further with the petitioner. We have talked at staff level about, um, the other situation in that corridor with, uh, the other food pantry and some traffic concerns related to that. We'd like to revisit that as well, um, but that's not related to the petitioner's, middle, directly.
But that backs down Sheridan Road and it goes up Sixteenth Street as well. And if they were to have that actually on the same day, I don't. That, I don't know where, I don't know where that traffic would back up and, um, I believe that that's an online food pantry, right? So the, the model's a little different, it's not so much, uh. So it's a, it's a pre-ordered food, they can order from anywhere, right?
That's correct, and that's what they kind of addressed the Planning and Zoning Commission in response to the traffic issue is that, because. The clients are using an app, they kinda know the window of pickup as opposed to them just showing up and waiting in a line. Uh, so they can kinda mitigate it in that regard.
And the caveat of using the app is, it's, it's a good concept, I think the app and the food pantry. But that app now is what, nationwide or statewide, anybody can come, it doesn't necessarily service. Um, just North Chicago, right, it's not like it's a food pantry, we all know about it, we go there, it's actually an app. And they still have their establishment in Waukegan, their, their other office and their main office in Waukegan.
Uh, I don't know if so much called as a main office, but they did recently open what they call Post Market. Uh, where they sell kinda baked goods and smoothie type products and coffee, that's a new facility that they opened maybe two weeks ago in Waukegan downtown. Uh, they had a different location, I think it was. From my knowledge, it's like a house that, that was just kind of an office area, I don't know that the, to what capacity the food pantry was really operating out there. Um. Yeah, that's as much as I know frankly.
And the tester charging station that they have there, and they got like three tester charging stations, was that public or was that just for them? That was just for them, right?
I understand that's just for them, for charging their fleet.
And it's charging their fleet, okay, and that's another thing with the parking, is they actually do have a fleet that's there. Um, about four or five vans, it's kinda sits there. Um, about four or five vans, it's kinda sits there in the parking lot. I don't know if there would be enough parking even, um, on those online order pickup days. And I, I, safety wise, I just don't think it's a great idea, but I'll go with whatever the council wants to go with.
Nope, they would, uh, they're, they're not using the drive-through, in fact, we put in a proposed, uh, condition that if approved, and they wanted to use this drive-through, that they would have to get a new special use permit. Because that's a whole different traffic pattern when you start using that drive-through, yeah.
Any more questions?
Alright, uh, I, I have to echo at least what Alderman Coleman and Alderman Jackson are saying. If you drive down through, through there on a Thursday, is it? It, it comes down Sheridan Road and goes up Sixteenth Street with, with the line of cars that are waiting to get food through the other food pantry that is there. Now, I don't know how this one is supposed to work, but they say that it is just pickup, you know, and only so many are, are allowed per hour to come and pick up. But if it ever changes and vehicles are starting to stack up there, especially if on a Thursday, it will be a nightmare, uh, so, you know, it, it's almost like we need to, to, to regulate where food pantries are in our city also. And, and, you know, how they're clustered and where they're, were, uh, being placed at. Because the two of them within a block of each other could, could really be detrimental to, to traffic. Just wanted to.
Any more questions?
Do you think, do you think there's more information they could provide about traffic patterns that would help the council make a decision?
I mean, he, he offered a explanation to Alderman Coleman, we could make that email available to the rest of the council. We did not circulate that email exchange, uh, ahead of this meeting, so we could make that. You know, it was several paragraphs on how their app, uh, addresses their traffic concerns and, uh, how they have a relatively small fleet in their opinion and yada, yada. So we could make that available to the extent, we don't have like a traffic study or something like that.
And th- there, there are three options the council has right now. The option, I mean, you're not voting tonight, but then, when the Plan Commission refers a recommendation to you, your options are to accept their recommendation and approve it, or you could vote it down, or you could refer it back to the Plan Commission for additional study. That's sort of the third option, you can say yes, no, or go back to planning again.
Uh, I think that'd be a great idea, if they can go back to planning, um, because it came to council, we had issues and with the, the traffic flow, and maybe it can go back to your committee and you guys can get a clear explanation for it. Or he can give you a clear explanation for us for the next time.
Or can, instead of going back to, to the board, just talk to the owners and tell them the concern that we have.
So, the, the owners have rights, they filed an application, they went to the Plan Commission, Plan Commission made a recommendation, it comes to the council, the council has to take action. You're at, you have three choices. So, we can't just, we can't just put them in the closet and, and ignore them.
What I'd say is.
But, but I hear you, but usually, because this is now brought to council, shouldn't they be here to address any issues we have?
That's, it, it, that affects how you vote on their application.
I just wanted to, I mean, if they knew they were on agenda and this is something they're looking for, I would've been here. I mean, we've seen everybody else that was here, you know, that was looking for getting things passed, they were out in the audience, just in case you had a question.
Right, I'd clarify, I did not send further notice of the agenda being sent to them or anything, but they were present at the last meeting when it was brought up about having an email exchange and they could've pulled up the agenda. What I'd offer is that, um, in my opinion, they've, they've, I believe their response to asking for additional information about the traffic patterns and the like, they'll say that we, we've already explained ourselves, and that I, I doubt there's little more to add to that unless they were to change up their business plan or model or something to that extent, or produce a traffic study by a third party or something.
Alderman Evans.
Well, bring them back, there's, I mean, we're not in no rush for them, I mean, at least we could give them opportunity to see what's going on, make sure it's right, make sure it's wrong before we make the decision.
You'd be recommending to remand it back to the planning zoning?
Right, no, no, bring them, send them to come back up here and talk to, to us.
Till table it till the next meeting.
Right, you could table.
Well, I kinda agree with what Taylor just said, they've, that question's already been asked at the board, and so that was addressed. And the answer was basically, what was their answer?
Uh, basically that they use the app-based model and that they, um, use that to try to create timelines for when the windows come, that they have a certain number of pickups per hour, it's capped for them. It doesn't necessarily stop someone from showing up late, that they would still be able to pick up their order, but they do limit it to a certain window availability for pickup. Um, they've also mentioned their, uh, past record, cuz they were operating out of the facility for a few days and they, uh, mentioned that or, uh, recalled that and the traffic that occurred during those times.
Was there a traffic problem then?
To my knowledge, no, but they also weren't operating kinda publicly or started up fully, right, they were just beginning.
And I think just for food, uh, food for thought, we need to address where there was, where there is a traffic issue with the previous, I mean, the ones that's in, on place now, with the, cuz they're the one that's backed up all around the corner. They're the one that's creating the traffic problem, not the new people that are coming. But I'm just saying, it's, it's, it, it, you go after them if it's a problem, it's a problem, the problem's gotta be addressed, that's, that's the issue.
So, I guess, uh, I guess are we tabling it or are we?
I don't see it as a problem, Mayor.
I was just gonna say, when you said there's a, a, are an issue, the, I think they handle their issue appropriately, because, I mean, there's a orderly line of how they receiving their food, so I, it's not like it's, it's a congestion. I, I don't think we've ever heard any, any, any concerns over the fact that there's a line that people are accepting food, just like the, the one over, uh, Argon, but how they line up and there's never, we haven't heard, the, the problem comes that couldn't, that could come, is now we bringing another one in and additional traffic could cause a problem. It's not the one that's there now, it's, if, if we bring another one in, how could that affect the traffic flow that's already there? That's, that's what we are concerned.
So, wha- what is the consensus on the next step? Do we wanna ask the applicant to come back and speak to the committee?
Alderman Evans, I mean Coleman. If we get general consensus to table it, um, there's some other things that Mister, um, our Chief of Staff is going to, with the appearance code on Sheridan Road he was supposed to be working on. So I would like to get some feedback from the appearance code as well, how is that pantry gonna look? And like you said, the clustering of the pantries and things of that nature. So, um, what does our downtown look like in two years, right, so we'll just table it.
We won't have an answer about the appearance code on what that proposal would be at that time, we still would have to advertise that and then, then third party would come in and consult with us to draft what that language is, that word, that's several months apart. We would have to act on this prior to seeing any draft of it.
Now, just a question, has he been operating out, I'm, I'm confused.
We did, uh, he was operating out of it, we did a stop work order on him, uh, and he was back in the property, did go to adjudication and did receive a penalty judgment.
So, technically, he got started off on the wrong foot, he should've came to council and got this done before he moved in, right? So, the time at this point is, we can go ahead and table it and, and wait to see what our downtown wants to look like, right? And then, the time is not really our concern at this point, right?
As much as I say his attorney, you do have to take action on it, he has a right as a petitioner who have filed a petition in accordance with our city code and ordinances, so we do have to act on it.
We gotta vote it up or down?
Up, down, or PZC, one of those.
Or what?
Or PZC, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Down or back, but we can't, we can't just say, wait for two years until we give you an answer, that would be, that would be wrong.
Uh, yeah, I would, I would send it back, yeah, that's what I would most definitely recommend, send it back. Uh, I think planning and zoning understand what the issues are a little bit clearer. So you guys can come up with a strategy and we go from there at the next one.
Alright, we'll table it to the next meeting.
Well, no, uh, it would go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they would have to open a new public, uh, hearing for it.
So, two weeks from now, it'll be on the council, and the action on the council will be to refer the item back to PZC. Cuz that's the only time you can vote. So, it, on the, during regular business, next council meeting, it'll be on the agenda and you can make a motion to refer it back to PZC.
And that does not need the notification window, correct, for the new hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we don't?
No, we don't have to renotice.
Alright, that's what we'll do then. Alright, one last time, I get a motion to close economic, no, no, let me finish. For one last time, as Alderman of the fifth ward, can I get a motion to close Economic Development Planning and Zoning Committee? Alright, Alderman, uh, Murphy and Alderman Jackson, thank you ladies and gentlemen. Roll call. I wanna roll call.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy. Alderman January.